We have the Cameron City Council, October seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen. We will not put an order. If you all stand and join me in the hall of legends.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up on the agenda is real talk.
Attorney General.
Here.
Dennis M. Clark.
Here.
Jerian Edens.
Here.
John R. Feiger.
Here.
Juan Jack.
Here.
Take us to the minutes of the October third, two thousand and sixteen regular set. There are no additions or fractions. We move to the second. So moved.
Second.
Moved to second discussion. Seeing there is none, all votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda is public participation. Individuals addressing the council are asked to step to the microphone and clearly state your name and address before speaking. You have a five minute time limit. There is a piece paper for you. Put your name and address on as well. And seeing there is none, that'll take us to the community project or anyone who wishes to speak on that. Takes us to the municipal pool in Ballfield status. The city manager department.
Thank you. On our Start Smart program, the Head Start is still in the works. We're trying to get that application completed. Well, not we, but CAP is doing most of the work. Getting that done and getting some info, we submitted our info to them and or to the architect to submit to them. And so we're still in the running for that and hope everything goes well with that. We'll hear from it here pretty soon, hopefully. Street projects, Layford, Fifth, Sixth meet. Areas all complete. City crews are still doing some of the remaining sidewalks in the area that weren't part of the project. There are a few areas that we extended out or had to do for other reasons, so we working on that now. Grass is pretty much already established on much of that project, so the rains, it's good for us in that respect, even though it helped the project quite a bit. Sidewalk over past project is gonna be a little, it looks like a little bit behind. They haven't worked the last couple of days because they've had some slowdowns on some dirt and some other issues, but nothing major, so that should be taking place again pretty soon. The animal shelter, we met with the architect on the getting a proposal for the design for the shelter. Should be getting that pretty soon in the next week or two. And we have a couple of sites to consider for that when we give that and give us time to look, taking another look at the existing site now to see if that is gonna work because of some utilities underground and what, how we wanna approach that. Highway thirty-six Alliance finished its new website and I have it on your report there. Check it out when you get time. It's pretty nice. They, this group does a really good job to promote tourism along the thirty-sixth corridor from Saint Joseph to Hannibal. And the highway thirty-six corridor is thirty-six miles north and thirty-six miles south of the highway. It's that strip. And so they call it the way of American genius and then they talk about all of the people who are from this, that area as well as the, some of the things to do in the area. It's a really good tourism group to work with. We've been a member since they started, so it's something we definitely wanna stay involved with. The hair street service installed this on your report. That was finished basically today. Midriff asphalt paved the, basically half, almost half the street where the trench was cut plus extra there. And I drove earlier to, for smoothness, see how, it really turned out pretty well for a trench repair. It's not meant to be a street repair, but they did a nice job filming back. Has the concrete underneath it, so they built the trench up and built their dirt back up and then put the concrete cap on that and they left room for the asphalt, so. That new pipe is a fifteen inch. It did have a ten inch and a fifteen carry about two point two times, a little more, over twice what the old pipe did. So what that'll do, hopefully, is keep backups from happening upstream where we've experienced going along the road and the housing area, but they put backflow devices on a few years ago. I think that helped a lot. And we have another, at Eight Street, we have backups, overflows. This'll get it down at least to the lift station. We have some storage down there. If it overflows, at least it won't, it won't do any backup. We're kinda moving the problem in a way, but we're getting into a better place for now until we can get the rest addressed. And as we make these improvements, that total flow volume should go down and eliminate that altogether, so. Or at least reduce it. We'll never eliminate it, but reduce it, so. That's all I have.
Questions or comments? Seeing there is none, that takes us to unfinished business. There's nothing there, so we'll go to new business. We have first reading on bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-five.
Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-five, an ordinance authorizing an economic development agreement and memorandum of understanding to promote economic development within the city of Cameron by and between the city of Cameron, Clinton and DeKalb counties of Missouri and Cameron Chamber of Commerce, DBA Economic Development of Cameron.
I want to take a motion, pass bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-five on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second. Discussion, Pam Ice, Michael Don.
My name's Michael Don, let you know, I'm the, I'm actually the chairman or treasurer of Economic Development Cameron. And Pam Ice is a member of Economic Development Cameron and also the chamber's vice president. So we're here basically tonight to talk to you a little bit about economic development, what our committee has done in the past and kinda how we perform. It's okay if we do just a little bit of background and then answer any questions that you might have. Economic Development Cameron, which I'm gonna tailor it as EDOC, was formed approximately five years ago and it was a cooperative effort between the city of Cameron and the Cameron Chamber of Commerce to fill economic development void that was left by the city's economic development director. There was a lot of individuals within our city that felt like that economic development was so important that we needed to continue to pursue it. The chamber was very interested in doing that and we felt between the city and the chamber that it was a good partnership of a private and public partnership and it would work well to do that. So as we, as we formed that, EDOC is actually a committee of the Chamber of Commerce. They are governed, they're kind of a separate committee per se. They are actually governed by a set of laws, not by laws, but a set of rules or regulations that the Chamber of Commerce board of directors and EDOC group put together and signed off on, okay? In the end, EDOC answers to the Chamber of Commerce board of directors is how that partnership works, with its one exception. So as time has went on, it's been a very good partnership. I was working with the city, with the chamber, with other individuals within our community. And that EDOC group formed a board, a board of, a committee, basically. And those committee members are made up of all chamber members, but there was, there are individuals on there that represent, of course, the city of Cameron, plus the mayor and the city manager has a seat on that board. We have representatives from the school, from the hospital, and the rest are pretty much lay-in large chamber, chamber members within the community that own and operate businesses. As time has moved on, like I said, it continues, has continued to be a good, a good part, a good working relationship. And that formed about five years ago, I think it was around four years ago, that we actually come to the city council and ask to help fund that project. We ask at the time that the city fund three thousand dollars a month to EDOC, that money given correctly to EDOC and to be used as they see fit, with one exception. So that's worked out really well in the last four years. The city council has approved that, which amounts to thirty-six thousand dollars a year. The one exception I keep talking about is actually the agreement that we have, EDOC has between the city of Cameron and EDOC. And it's actually written in that contract, it's the Chamber of Commerce or EDOC doing business by the Chamber of Commerce, okay? That committee has the authority to receive the funds and disperse the funds the way that they deem necessary. At, with the exception in the contract and in the agreement that we have with the city council, it actually states in several places, and hopefully you've all seen a copy of that, as to what we're required to do from the city side, whether it be to hire a consultant, a firm, or whatever. We pay that KCADC dues, which amounts to seventy-five hundred dollars a year also out of that, plus any other expenses that may be incurred there. We're not furs with money. I think probably all of you have the treasurer's report. You have an incoming expense statement from two thousand and sixteen and a projected two thousand and seventeen. We do the best we can to put the outside donations, which has amounted in the last two years to six thousand dollars a year from outside donations and have the check the same for two thousand and seventeen. What you have in front of you is, is in the same contract as has been in years past, asking for the city to be a part of economic development with EDOC, a committee of the Chamber of Commerce. We feel like that looking at the cost savings from hiring a full-time economic developer to hire a consultant to do that work, we're saving somewhere in the vicinity of seventy-eight thousand dollars a year. Might move now. So anyway, having said all that, I'm open for any questions that you might have, Pam, and I'll be glad to answer those. Here again, we just asked to renew that contract, that agreement for another year, for two thousand and seventeen. We also asked for the thirty-six thousand dollars to go towards our efforts of hoping to promote economic development in Cameron. There are, there's also another sheet that you should have that shows some of the accomplishments that has been made in two thousand and sixteen. I think as we've talked before, I mean Pam and I don't know a lot of, probably a lot out of those in economic development world with a lot of information gets out, then those prospects actually turn and run. That's, that's the way it works. That's the way it is. It takes a lot of time to put it together. You may have a project that you've been working on for three or four years, or five or six, before it ever comes to reality. There's some of those projects that's been worked on for the last four to five years that's still in the bucket. Hopefully will come to reality at some point in time. There are some projects that's on the, on the horizon right now that you can't talk about. Really, I don't know anything about. I don't ask those questions. I believe in our consultant. I believe that that person brings this information to us, they're doing their due diligence, and they work with the appropriate people to make that happen, i.e. the city manager. I know Tim was here that worked with Tim and some other individuals if there was a project out there to get all that information together. That's not information that's purely me, that's things that I don't wanna know. I don't wanna make that mistake, but I answer, open my mouth somewhere where I shouldn't. But I can tell you also that, that the chamber and our economic development director makes a lot of, goes a lot of places. We've talked to a lot of people. We was in Jefferson City, of course, promoting economic development in Cameron. We've been other places. We go to a lot of meetings. We've talked to a lot of people, like I said. And our vision is maintaining what we have and growing Cameron to be able to sustain itself. And that's, that's our vision. That's what we want to accomplish. We have a lot of hardworking individuals on our committee that puts forth a tremendous amount of time. And we aren't gonna say that we don't like it because we didn't, we wouldn't be there. We aren't gonna say that we don't like getting up at seven o'clock because we must, because we show up there, or tell them what time one day or night we might be promoting a project. That's, that's, that's what we wanna do. That's our vision. We want the city to be a part of that. And we have to have the city to be a part of that. It's just not that we want, we have to have them to be a part of the growth. And I think as I've heard the council speak other times, that's what they want to, so.
I just wanna let the council know that when we first started this about four to five years ago, we had a chamber board. As all boards happened, boards rotate through. We have fresh eyes over the last couple of years. We once again went back to the chamber this last session and we sat down and talked about economic development. And the chamber board came back with a, a yes. The chamber's main mission is building the foundation for stronger community. The chamber board members once again said economic development is extremely important for our community and if the city so chooses to partner with us, we are more than happy to partner with the city to promote Cameron and economic development. So I wanted you to know that the chamber board, which is a separate board from the economic development board, has reviewed this contract and information and feel like the promotion of Cameron in whatever manner for jobs, for increased revenues for our community is important to all businesses in the community and for our future development. Do you have any questions for us?
Questions or comments?
Maybe just one. The board has worked very closely with Mr. Remory and as you said, there's been a variety of members. Was the renewal of the contract controversial at all or was it pretty well?
I'll be not getting into that. We, this contract has to be completed before we contract with someone to conduct economic development. And just like any of our employees of the chamber, or even people that we employ contract, we discussed that in executive session. So we have not made any final decisions, but yes, we have used them in the past, but this contract has to be summed off on before we decide to enter an agreement with the next phase. This is the first step.
I have a question. Would you ever consider having members, so to speak, at large who are not business owners, who are just interested in economic development but don't own a business?
We do currently have people, they are chamber board members, chamber members, but they don't own their own business, that are on, that serve on.
Does anybody else have any before I go?
I'll maybe stick at.
Okay. Okay. First, I think pretty much everybody knows, I've been pretty adamant, I'm not happy with, with what Kerry has provided. As a, as a boss, for sixteen of the twenty years I was in finance, if someone would have provided, I was hoping he'd be here tonight because I don't think it's real fair to not give him a chance to, to talk as well, but honestly, I would have fired him a long time ago. And I understand and I've heard him say, you've got, it takes nine or ten years. Nine or ten years in a lot of cases, that's, I mean, that's a lot of money. That's up to three hundred and sixty thousand a year. When I hear folks that have talked to me, just different businesses in town, I'll never throw anybody under the bus, but I've heard from people on the chamber, I've heard of people off the chamber, I've heard of other businesses that aren't happy with him. But the only thing I can ever get is, well, he's a member of the KCADC. He's got experience. He can talk to folks. And you know what? Maybe, maybe in the past, he's really good at this, but I, I haven't seen anything. Now, I know there's not been any business brought indirectly, at least in the last four years. And I've seen the list of what he's got and where he's working. I'll be honest with you, this weekend, I talked to two different businesses on coming in. I've talked to three, four, excuse me, in the last month. Not saying that I'm bringing anything in, but I've gone out and brought people in to talk to them. And that's more than what I've seen with the information that I've got. I'm just wondering if he would be willing, if, if he really believes that he can bring in business, then there's, I think we've got two choices. We either, A, we, we continue on the same path and we're paying him. By the way, I'm not attacking you guys. I don't want you to feel like that. I'm not attacking him either. It's just from a business perspective. Either we're gonna keep paying him the way we've been paying him and probably gonna get the same results, or if he's as good as he says he is, let's go with a commission. Give him a commission. Most salespeople are, are very used to a commission type basis. If he brings in business, I don't have a problem paying him, but I, I just, I feel like we've spent, you know, a hundred and forty thousand dollars in four years and I'm not seeing anything. And I don't think it's fair for Cameron to continue to pay that amount of money when we're not seeing something back in return. So that's just my, my opinion. Like I said, I really wish he was here because I don't like saying this when, when someone's not here, but I think that's a better route to go. Or, as one of the other real estate agents that I spoke with not too long ago said, why don't we hire someone young that's got a new vision and, and give him a small salary and give him a bonus and say, get someone from Cameron that's willing to come back and, and sell Cameron. Get someone that knows Cameron. So anyway, I know it's a lot to digest. I just wanted to throw that out. And again, no, it's not, this is not a personal thing. This is purely business with me and I've had to let other people go in the past as well. Some people that I really, really liked, but I just don't see spending the money the same way.
There's no way that I will ever overcome that. As I will say is this one thing. We have on our committee a staff of very high important businessmen that employ lots of employees yearly. And that staff of committee members looks yearly because our consultant, no matter who it is, our consultant is hired on a yearly basis, based upon how the committee feels of the work that they actually accomplished throughout that year. And in the past, past four years, our consultant has been rehired because of the amount of work that was accomplished and a lot of the labor work that was done and the parameters that had been set and the groundwork that has been set for future accomplishments. So to say that, that consultants, that a consultant has not been reviewed, I'm gonna say is, is an inaccurate statement because that consultant has been reviewed by the committee, which has been challenged to hire that consultant, okay? That's.
Review wise, I'm, I don't, I'm not quite understanding. I'm just saying he has a lot of.
You know, I, I, I've been in Cameron for a lot of years and I'm not gonna.
Sure.
It's okay. Is it okay?
Go ahead.
Okay. I, I seen with our last economic development director of the city who was here, I seen projects that was brought up and it took years to ever come to fruition. I saw projects, small project, larger projects, probably the largest project we ever got from that, honestly, was Casey Pollin. That project took many years to accomplish. I knew a little bit of it because I've worked with that project to become a fruition out here. There were other projects, small, that actually came to fruition off of, of our previous economic development directors that was here, that was hired here. So I'm not in the business, but I know from history, it takes a long time to ever accomplish that. I also know from business and our consultant is representing Cameron. As we, as business owners, go out into the public, or as our consultant goes out into the public or goes to KCADC, which is a, we get a huge amount of hits that comes from there, actual things to go look for. We get several from Missouri Economic Development. But the contacts that a consultant has across the state of Missouri, across our area, an area by person, and the longevity of being in business makes a huge difference. And I've been around our consulting quite a bit. I knew our consultant way before he was ever hired here of a track record. And I can say personally, if I didn't think that person was doing a good job, I'm gonna be the first one to blow the whistle. Because I have enough business sense personally to be able to see that. I'm gonna be the first one to ask that question. So that's all I can say.
I just wanna marry from the stance from the chamber that we do not discuss, individuals that we hire. We do that in executive session. We don't find that's professional to disparage someone publicly. We do have two members from the council that serve on our board. You're welcome to direct any concerns and add back to those members to the board. We'd be happy to address those. You're also welcome to come speak with us in one of our meetings, but ask for an executive session for us to discuss that, but we will not discuss that publicly.
Okay. Fair enough.
Anything?
Mike. When you've been dealing with this, how many years has it taken to get Chong's? How long have you been talking to Chong's to get to where they're at today? How many years?
It's an ongoing process. It's been a lot of years.
It's an existing business.
So it doesn't, it is an existing business, but businesses, some are slow to, that's what I'm trying to, the point I'm trying to make here is that, that some people like that, it's, they know they're gonna do it for, I mean, I've been here about four or five years and they've, they've moved dirt finally. Sometimes it takes a while. Some, some businesses are, are snouts, some wanna jump. Sometimes you gotta be careful when you get one that wants to jump. We've had that and that was not a good deal, so. Can I?
Anything further? I do wanna thank the council for working with the chamber. I know the chamber board and the business. and the businesses that belong to the chamber are passionate about the community, and we appreciate the opportunity and the trust that you did place with us the last few years to try to fill this gap, and we look forward to the direction from the council to continue to work.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Just a few more comments. You know, economic development, for some people, is not a real exciting subject, and it's really nothing more than finding different ways, and there's a multitude of that, of broadening our economic base to pay for the cost of living in a community, whether it's roads, streets, or police, whatever. And it's about setting the stage so that we can be successful, and that a council ten or twenty years from now can be successful. I would tell you that, I was on the council when we made the transition from having it, having an employee solely, he was an employee of the city manager, and the manager answers to the council. And it is, it is a setup that is ripe for misunderstandings and communication breakdowns. And I am, I've gone much more the other direction, that this public-private relationship is the way to go, because the business community and the manager and the council are all receiving the same message, that this is what's going on. And part of what has happened in this last four or five years is, we've received messages we didn't want to hear, and it made life harder, but it was also things that we had to hear. We had to hear that we don't have any land, and you're gonna have to have it if you're gonna be competitive. You can't have houses falling down all over town, you've gotta work on your quality of life. These are all things that make council work and city work more challenging, and messages that, that, you know, maybe some people didn't want to hear, but it was necessary if we're gonna move forward, and if we're going to build an economic base to provide the things that it takes to run a community, and to have the kind of community that all of you want to live in. So the public-private way, in my view, is absolutely the way to go. And in this particular case, for those that want to really look back at Cameron six years ago and see where we were at, it's like having a football coach, and he doesn't have a football field, and he doesn't have any pads, and his big player's a hundred and thirty pounds, then we're gonna beat him up because he's not winning football games. You know, it's not realistic. So, the process has been started, and it's been an ongoing thing to try and set Cameron up to succeed. So we have, this particular bill is for continuation of the public-private partnership. And we have three options: do absolutely nothing, forget about economic development, and just hope things work out, and we'll let it be someone else's problem down the road. I'm not comfortable with that. We can do the public-private thing, or we can do a full-time one, which is probably gonna cost us eighty, ninety thousand. To me, we're just, we're throwing money away if we hire somebody that doesn't have experience and doesn't have the contacts, because that's two key things in this type of business, is we need experience and contacts, so.
Would you be interested in a commission basis? If he's that good? I mean, that's what sells, you know sells, you, it's commission basis, that still gives him an opportunity to be on board.
To say that it's safe to say in a meeting on Thursday at seven AM, and you're welcome to come to that if you'd love to discuss.
So I am in favor of this bill and continuing the public-private partnership.
I want to sign up, thank you guys for your quarterly meetings, it's been great in educating the public and us as councils so that we're aware of what's going on. Prior to that, we really were just kind of on the air and had no information, I truly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
No more comments, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That's, say in favor, or opposed. Next item on the agenda, we have a first reading on Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-six.
Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-six, an ordinance approving a service agreement between the Cameron Fire Protection District and the City of Cameron, Clinton and DeKalis, Missouri, to provide fire protection and emergency services outside the Cameron city limits.
I want to entertain a motion to pass Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Mike?
Thanks again, counsel, for speaking on this, I'll change my hat just a little bit. This is basically a contract between the Cameron Rural Fire Protection District and the City of Cameron. Cameron Rural Fire Protection District was formed roughly twenty years ago. It includes a hundred and forty-four square miles outside the city limits of Cameron. Not inclusive, the city limits are not inclusive, and that's basically follows the Cameron school district. The contract actually states that the City of Cameron will provide all of their city services in that area for a fee. The fee would be sixty percent of the proceeds from the Rural Fire District, which the Rural Fire District is a property tax-based district. Sixty percent of that revenue comes to the City of Cameron direct as they receive it, and forty percent of the money that they collect is retained in their treasury to be able to purchase equipment for the fire department, it's for fire department use only. I can go through the list of what they've purchased over the years, but the most recent was a two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar truck that they purchased for the fire department. The other thing is, with that forty percent of that money that they purchase equipment with, that all comes direct to the City of Cameron, it's titled, that truck, all the equipment is titled to the City of Cameron, the City of Cameron owns that, so it is all for fire department use. To kind of give you an idea of what's went on, from the time that district was formed, it brought in approximately sixty thousand dollars when it was formed, it's bringing in a bill over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year now. So what that actually tells me is, a huge amount of growth out in the rural area. Looking for our services, I have probably, with the exception of commercial, I have more liability in the rural area than I have inside the city limits. That's why it always takes equipment improvements all the time. So, anyway, I'm just asking, on behalf of the Rural Fire District, for renewal of the contract for one more year, you also saw in my cover letter that I'm now, the rural district's billing for, like, accidents, fires, for individuals that receive our services in their district but do not live or pay taxes within that district, and I can do that by state statute. Our hazmat calls that we provide out in the rural area, that is all billed through the City of Cameron, and the City of Cameron receives those funds, it makes it a little easier for me. So, we can, if I have to answer the questions.
Questions or comments, Mike?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. Next item is a full reading on Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-seven.
Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-seven, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Cameron, Clinton and DeKalis, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, providing for airport improvements, project number sixteen dash zero one three A dash one, AWAS, designed at the Cameron Memorial Airport.
I want to entertain a motion to pass Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-seven on a first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion, Drew?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Like these, this is actually kind of an easy one, the last meeting you guys had approved the engineering services agreement for the design of this work, this bill is for the acceptance of the grant money for that work. Just a quick recap, it's with designs of block nerve services for the design and construction of our AWAS and our airport. This is a grant up to forty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars, with a match of up to five thousand and ninety-two dollars. This is a formal process to set the grant bodies for that project.
Any questions, Drew?
Another question, just wanted to say, thanks, I like numbers, so spelling it out for me, I like it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further? We'll proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. I want to entertain a motion to suspend the rules and pass Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-seven on a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. We'll proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. I want to entertain a motion to pass Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-seven on a second reading by roll call.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second.
Darlene Breckenridge.
Yes.
Dennis M. Clark.
Yes.
Jeri Ann Evans.
Yes.
John R. Feiger.
Yes.
Ronnie Jack.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, we have a full reading on Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-eight.
Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-eight, an ordinance authorizing the city manager of the City of Cameron, Clinton and DeKalis, Missouri, to enter into a professional services agreement with Bartlett and West Incorporated for design of Grove Street Improvement Project.
I want to entertain a motion to pass Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Drew?
Thank you again, this bill is for the agreement with Bartlett and West Engineering Firm, who are looking at to design services for infrastructure improvements for Grove Street from Fourth to Eighth. This is the next project from our transportation sales tax, our goal was to do one project a year once we got going, Grove Street is the next one on our list. As part of the project, it does include the storm sewer, current gutter, drag weight if needed, sidewalks, intersection work of Eighth and West. Also as part of the project, while we didn't already been in this area, we also have stormwater at the Eighth and Enzitrix Grove intersection. On our stormwater list, that intersection between West, on Eighth Street, between West and Grove Street was number six on our stormwater list. This project for design would also catch that stormwater project also. Also for engineering services, is within reason of what we're looking at for the project, our normal range of a seven to twelve percent, I think they're right around, ten percent for their engineering services for what we're anticipating for construction costs for this project. We are asking for a full reading on this tonight, to kind of get this where we can have the preliminary design done and completed by January, where we could then host a public meeting for all the property owners that would be impacted in this area. It's the same thing we did on the last one, let them come in, take a look at what's planned for their area, their property, make comments, we could then go take that back, make the final last changes, before we send it out to bid with construction in spring, summer, for the completion of late summer of two thousand and seventeen for the completion of this project. So therefore, we're requesting a full reading for the agreement with Bartlett and West. Any questions I could answer?
I do have just one real quick question. Is there a time where we change prioritizations of specific streets, like if something's happened? I'm thinking of like the Orange Street thing, I know it's more of a FEMA, still kind of waiting on that, but do you ever change the prioritization, or are these kind of remnants down, these, this is the order unless something just extremely happens?
No, great question. The stormwater list was prioritized, we definitely have the flexibility to change it. At the time when we passed the tax, we asked for any stormwater, of course, we received a bunch of, a lot of them were ones the city could take care of, and then from that point, then we asked a third party to come in and rank those on a number of different criteria. This one fell on, two thousand and eleven, okay, ten, around that time, this one fell at number six on the list.
Have we had someone come back in and kind of do a reevaluation on any of those? I'm just wondering if something might have, maybe a couple of these were worse than what others were at that time, you know what I'm saying, it kind of changes. I'm thinking because of all those water that were moving in different directions, and different amounts seemed to be flowing, just wondering, I mean, mainly it goes back to the Orange Street again, where I'm seeing that, so that's just what's in my head of, do we need to prioritize something else? Just out of curiosity.
City manager, city council, if that's something you guys would like to go back and reevaluate, Walnut Street took up number one and number two of the bulk of the stormwater fund monies. We're not targeting or looking at this project because of the stormwater list, but because of the transportation list of Grove from Fourth to Eighth. But at the intersection, that's where the stormwater from the west, in the backyard, in the intersection, and the empty lots to the east of Grove all converge right at that intersection. So we have to, we really have to expand the project to, when it comes to stormwater, in order to finish the intersection for our transportation project.
Okay. Well, I'd take this offline, that's good, thank you, appreciate that.
Any other questions, Drew?
There's a challenge on that, because when those, when that was presented to the public, the list was on there. And so, I agree, if something unusual would surface, then it needs to be relooked at, but it could certainly send the message, hey, you voted for this, and now we're flipping it on you, and we're doing something else. So for example, Griffin Road, as I recall, was not on that list, we had complaints, how come you guys don't pay for that? Use the storm, or use the street money for that instead of in town, well, that's not what we voted on, and it could easily leave people feeling like, well, hey, I voted on this, this is what you guys told me, and you flipped it on me. So it is, it is a, something we would want to be cautious with.
It was intended to be completed as promised.
Okay.
We'll proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. I want to entertain a motion to suspend the rules and pass Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-eight on a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. We'll proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. I want to entertain a motion to pass Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-eight on a second reading by roll call.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second.
Dennis M. Clark.
Yes.
Jeri Ann Evans.
Yes.
John R. Feiger.
Yes.
Ronnie Jack.
Yes.
Darlene Breckenridge.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, we have a first reading on Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-nine.
Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-nine, an ordinance for the City of Cameron, Clinton and DeKalis, Missouri, repealing and replacing section five dash ninety-one definitions and section five dash one oh one, restraint of vicious or dangerous dogs, division two dogs, article four animals, in chapter five, health and sanitation of the code of the City of Cameron, Missouri, to establish additional guidelines for identifying and controlling vicious or dangerous dogs.
I want to entertain a motion to pass Bill two thousand and sixteen dash forty-nine on a first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion.
This ordinance has been developed over quite a period of time between staff and the attorneys, and what we're seeing in the country, in the state especially, is getting away from more breed-specific legislation to a generalized dangerous animal or dangerous dog type of verbiage for the ordinance. And this was reviewed by Troy when he was temporarily acting as our city attorney, and when he could no longer do those duties, Patrick will be taking that over, but Patrick has, will be involved in this, and has seen these types of ordinances many times already. We think it's pretty much ready to go, the companion, not a companion, but the following ordinance regarding pitfalls, we had both of these, we had a red word, we could use both if we had to for a period of time, and then we could enact the dangerous dogs when it's time, and if the council wanted to drop the breed specific, they could, and then this would just take over. So, it's not perfect, either way you look at this thing, I've researched this myself, trying to find the truth about all this stuff, and it's very difficult, when you have professional organizations disagreeing and everything, but I think it's pretty decent, it's pretty decent language, so. But I think it's pretty decent. It's pretty decent language, so. I went through it. I don't, I don't see anything that needs to be changed. I think it's ready to go at this time.
Any questions? Seeing there is none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda, our first reading on Bill 2016-50.
Bill 2016-50, an ordinance for the city of Cameron, Clinton and DeKalb Counties, Missouri, repealing section five dash one oh two, keeping a pit bull dog prohibited, division two dogs, article four animals, of chapter five, health and sanitation of the code of the city of Cameron, Missouri.
I'll entertain a motion to pass Bill 2016-50 on a first reading.
So move.
Second.
Move in second discussion. Seeing there is none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda is resolution 2016-21.
Resolution 2016-21, a resolution for the city of Cameron, Clinton and DeKalb Counties, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease purchase agreement with a Lakewood Dodge for six two thousand seventeen Dodge Charger police vehicles in the Cameron Police Department.
I'll entertain a motion to pass resolution 2016-21.
Ordinance fifty.
Mark.
Did you do ordinance fifty?
Yes.
Yes.
You did both in the same, oh, okay.
No, we did, sir.
We did it separately. Captain, mercy.
Waiting for a motion.
So move.
Second.
Move in second discussion.
Mayor, Council, thank you. In two thousand thirteen, we entered a lease purchase agreement with flat seven Dodge and Ally for the six Dodge Chargers that we have. Those are rear-wheel drive. They replace our aging fleet of the Ford Crown Vics, which three of those had transmission problems. And it wasn't worth fixing them because it was more than what the cars were worth. We got the, we got the six Dodge Chargers. We ordered equipment that is Dodge-specific for the Chargers. So the equipment that is in our cars are three or four years old. We fulfilled our obligation with flat seven Dodge and Ally. And we now own the Chargers. At that time, I believe it was approximately a hundred fifty-five thousand that we financed due to the trade-in value of the Crown Vics. During that time, we've had some issues with them. Cam shafts, water pumps, all six of them has had their front ends replaced on. And this has been taken care of with a bunker bunker warranty that we got when we purchased the vehicles. Now the warranty is out. We ran out of the warranty with the cars. And we're still seeing some issues. We do have one car that's out of service right now that's getting a cam shaft replaced in it. And that, the cost of that repair is going to be on us for this car. We solicited bids through area dealerships for the two thousand seventeen Dodge Chargers. It's the police, the police package. These are all wheel drive, which will be better for the snow. Our payments for the, our payments for the Chargers that we got in two thousand thirteen was roughly in the mid-thirty thousand for the six. We're on the up end, we're on the up end side of the Chargers that we have now, where if we trade them in for the two thousand seventeens, the dealership that we, that got the bid for the cars is going to give us between eleven and twelve thousand dollars for each car that we have out there. Saying that, that means we're only going to have to finance about eighty-five thousand for the six new cars. We're going to keep them uniform. We're going to keep them the black and white. It is a professional look for us. With, with that payment, that twenty-three, oh, Lakewood Dodge got the bid. It was twenty-three thousand ninety-five dollars. They come in a little bit lower than what we had actually sent over to the city manager. But that, that puts each car about thirty-eight, forty-nine, seventeen for each car a year. That's all I have.
Any questions?
So you said you bought some pieces to put on the other cars. I know the undercarriage, parts like that, all of the, all of those parts, the extra parts, we'll be able to transfer those over to the new.
Everything that's in the cars will transfer over to the new cars. There will be no cost for sounder box, emergency lights, anything like that. The push bumpers that are on will fit on the other cars, so.
Thank you. Thanks for working with us.
I can't stop myself, Mayor. You were on the council years ago, and so was Councilman Jack. And I remember the PD coming to us and wanting to have some new cars. And we didn't have the money. And we had to say no. And they wanted, the chief then, at that time said, we need a generator because what we have won't do the job. And again, we had to say no. And we put our heads together collectively and we came up with a way to make it happen. And there's been a lot of criticism about the way we've run the finances of the city. A few years later, we're at forty-one percent roughly in reserves. And that's after we've spent it down fixing up the roads. And we now have the ability to go ahead and proceed purchasing these cars and the next resolution, which will be replacing two more vehicles. And we're able to do it and not blink and keep going and keep, and give you guys the kind of equipment you need to be successful. So couldn't stop myself, sorry.
You guys stay on the lease purchase program. You guys should be in pretty good shape forever.
Yes, if we stay on the lease purchase. The biggest thing is the warranty. The three-year, thirty-six thousand, we just ran out on the warranty, so of course the one car is getting fixed. But every issue that we had, Dodge was taking care of, so we haven't had to pay a dime.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for your time on doing those too.
You're welcome.
We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda is resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-two.
Resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-two, a resolution for the city of Cameron, Clinton and DeKalb Counties, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease purchase agreement with Barnes Baker Automotive Group for two two thousand seventeen Ford Explorer police utility vehicles for the Cameron Police Department.
I'll entertain a motion to pass resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-two.
So move.
Second.
Move in second discussion.
Again. Okay, again, we solicit bids through four for the sport utility vehicles. It's the police interceptor. These two vehicles will replace the chief's vehicle, which I believe is a two thousand four. It has lots of rust on it. This will replace the detective's vehicle, which is a nineteen ninety-nine. And we have no idea, the last time the odometer worked, it had, I believe, a hundred fifty or a hundred sixty thousand miles on it. So at this point, we have no idea how many miles is on it. Also, two years ago, I believe we replaced the K nine vehicle. And the old one is still, I guess you guys are probably seeing it sitting out front. So what we, what we would like to do here, we're going to take the chief's vehicle, the detective vehicle, and the old K nine vehicle and use that as a trade-in through Barnes Baker and Trenton, who got the bid for the police vehicles. And it looks like they're going to give us twenty-seven hundred for those three vehicles. The net price after that is fifty-one thousand five hundred forty-one, which comes out to be four annual payments of thirteen thousand three hundred sixty dollars.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing there is none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda is resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-three.
Resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-three, a resolution for the city of Cameron, Clinton and DeKalb Counties, Missouri, approving budget adjustment one for the budget year of October one, two thousand sixteen, to September thirty, two thousand seventeen.
I'll entertain a motion to pass resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
Move in second discussion.
This budget adjustment, number one, is really pretty small as far as quantity of items. The big item on here is the wastewater plant improvements, which we're reflecting, as well as the grants for the AWAS and the trim grant for the trees. So other than that, there are no, no other adjustments this time.
Questions or comments, please? Seeing there is none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda is a liquor license application.
I received an application for a recent change in ownership that Nell's Country Restaurant and Jones Travel Plaza in Cameron. It's new ownership. Liquor licenses do not transfer. So they had to pay prorated fees, which they paid. They filled out the application. They did the background checks. Everything was in order with their application. Yes, a motion to do a vote.
I want to entertain a motion that we do these together for Nell's Restaurant and Jones Travel Plaza.
So move.
Second.
Move in second discussion. We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda is board appointments. The advisory reappointments for Ken Othman and Mark Gertes and Richard Wayland. There are no objections. We'll proceed with these together. I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Ken Othman, Mark Gertes, and Richard Wayland to the advisory board.
So move.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. Takes us to our second public participation. Same rules apply as of earlier. Anyone wish to speak, come on up. Here's Miss Elaine Sparker. I have nothing, thank you. John?
Um, no, I don't have anything.
Danny?
Nothing.
Mark?
Hi, there were almost a go.
Drew? Zach?
Mike?
Uh, just, just information. The fire department is fully closed for Halloween thirty-first. I don't know how many years the district's been open house for the kids. They want a free hot dog. If you couldn't buy it, they would like to buy it. They actually hand out a quarter, five hundred, five hundred hot dogs. We only have a thousand, two hundred individuals come through the state. So that's going to be an error between the fire department and the police department in Cameron County District. So we'll get back to that in a minute.
Thank you. And I have nothing. That takes us to executive session. I'll entertain a motion to go to executive session by roll call.
So move.
Second.
Jeri Ann Edens.
Yes.
John R. Feiger.
Yes.
Ronnie Jack.
Yes.
Darlene Breckenridge.
Yes.
Thank you all for having me.
We should be pretty good at this by now.